Good evening, glad to welcome everybody to the August 13th meeting of the Rhinebeck Village Board. Our first item on our agenda is County Legislature Joel Tyner, but I would like to start out first with thanking Joel and thanking the Chairman of the Dutch County Legislature, Rob Rollison. I'm sure you folks may have heard in the paper or seen on the village website, press release I did, our former Mayor John Costa passed away on August 6th. And I had gone to the Dutch County Office Building yesterday to view the opening of the Dutch County History exhibit, which is outside the legislature chambers, and I did attend the meeting last night. And had asked Joel to, if he could perhaps have a moment of silence or recognition of Mayor Costa's service. And Joel was kind enough to ask the Chairman of the Legislature, Rob Rollison, and they both agreed that they would do so. So at the adjournment of the meeting last night, Joel very kindly read off this obituary for John, and the meeting was adjourned to John Donner. So I just want to share some things that are in this obituary. I'm not going to read the entire thing. John had passed away on August 6th in Cumming, Georgia, and he was preceded in death by his beloved wife Elizabeth, better known as Teddy Costa, on April 6th, 2012. John enjoyed a long and distinguished military career as an infantry officer and retired in 1989 from West Point as Brigadier General, following a tenure assignment as permanent professor and head of the Foreign Language Department. John and Teddy actively enjoyed the next 20 years living and working in Rhinebeck, New York before health issues required them to relocate to Camp George and be closer to family. Surviving family members, of course. He was born May 7th, 1925, and he and I shared the same birthday. John was a good friend to me. He and I were Rotary Club members here in Rhinebeck for a number of years, and that's how I got to know him. And we always got to celebrate our birthdays together at Rotary. A little bit more of his history. In 1943, he volunteered for air cadet training, was commissioned a second lieutenant in 1944, and served in World War II in the Army Air Corps until 1945. World War II was over, and what did John decide to do? He resigned his commission in order to join the Corps of Cadets at West Point, graduating in June of 1949 and being commissioned a second time as an officer in the infantry. He then embarked on a distinguished military career, which included leadership and command positions from platoon through brigade, as well as service in high-level staff assignments in many locations around the world. His numerous awards and citations include the Legion of Merritt, the Silver Star, and the Bronze Star. Upon his retirement from West Point in 1989, John had this distinction of being the last, where is it? Cut it off here. But he was the last World War II veteran to, how did that go, Joel? Remember the last, you got it there?
I think the oldest maybe active-
I think he was the oldest active-duty World War II veteran when he retired from West Point. While on assignment in Berlin, Germany in the early 1950s, he met the former Elizabeth Butler Schmerz, known by all as Teddy, and after their courtship, they remarried 25th May, 1954 in California, the start of 57 of rich and exciting years together. Raised five children, lived and traveled worldwide, worked and volunteered in a wide and impressive variety of endeavors, making a deep and lasting impression on all those lives they touched. Following his retirement in 1989, John and Teddy moved to Rhinebeck, New York, where he continued his efforts to be of service to his community for the next two decades. John was a gifted linguist and worked for six years for the government using his Russian language skills. He was elected, later elected as a village trustee of Rhinebeck in 1994 and again in 1996, and next served as a five-term mayor from 1997 through 2005. John's efforts and initiatives as mayor led to many significant accomplishments throughout the community ranging from infrastructure improvements to historical restoration projects. His tenure in Rhinebeck was marked by active volunteer participation with the American Legion Post 429, the old Rhinebeck Airdrome where he served under board of directors, volunteer at North Dutch Hospital, a member of the Rhinebeck Rotary Club, and active parishioner of the Good Shepherd Catholic Community, volunteer at Franklin Nursing Home, and a member of the Rhinebeck Coral Club. He'll long be remembered for his honorable and selfless service to his country, his extensive military accomplishments, his strong religious convictions, his active participation in the Catholic Church, his dedication to always leading by example, his endless devotion to his family, his tireless quest to help those in need and those less fortunate. His and Teddy's share love of opera and the Met, and last but certainly not least by his unwavering support of the Detroit Tigers. John Costa was a soldier, a loving husband and father, a teacher, a leader, and above all else, a gentleman and a man of integrity. There will be a funeral mass for John and Teddy at 10:00 AM on Monday, October 28th, 2013, at the Catholic Chapel at the U.S. Military Academy at West Point, followed by burial at the West Point Cemetery in full military honors. For recognition of Mayor John Costa. Thank you. Joel?
Thank you, sir. And, you know, I try to read the Poughkeepsie Journal, the Daily Freeman, and the Observer, and lots of others, all the newspapers daily. I confess, you know, I honestly, frankly, I did not even know until you told me last night about what had happened. Just John Costa was an incredibly nice, self-spoken guy. And I don't know if people are aware of this, Mayor Reardon, you stuck it out to the bitter end. There were some sort of intense conversations you bore witness to, but I don't know when things ended up, 9:00, 9:30, but you were there from, I don't know, 5:00 o'clock until 9:00 o'clock or something? It's like four hours straight, and so thank you for being-
I'm used to long board meetings.
And thank you for being there, and thank you, I, you know, again, I tried to read the papers cover to cover daily. I stupidly, I missed, I did not even know until, and you and I together walked over to Chairman Rollison and Carolyn Morris, the clerk, and we made it happen. And so Carolyn walked up to me at the end of the night, she's like, "We need to get something in writing." Because I didn't want to rush it. So something in writing, I believe, was prepared today. She made a commitment last night. So I'll make sure that gets here or a copy or gets to their family.
Thank you, Joel. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I didn't, you know, I knew him a little bit, but I honestly, I didn't even know. I tried to read the papers daily. I missed it till eventually. Now, I gave you one of these last night, Merier, and Brent and Hines, I gave you one of them.
He said if you wanted, I'll pass that on to you.
Even though I wasn't there, I had it.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
We all have to say one. I think it's a different colored paper.
Yeah, yeah. It's just about the issue, I think we're all aware, and you guys have been working hard on this and doing great work trying to find a middle ground and make sure that folks with mental illness, their rights are respected, as well as people who've been living here for decades. And there's been obviously a huge change at the 47 West Market Street Building. For three decades or so, the county ran that mental health programs out of there. And, you know, I fought the good fight against privatization, not attacking the nonprofits there, but there's been a lot of pressure to cut costs. That's like the big, the big goal, unfortunately. Apparently, the white vans that used to take clients, participants, consumers, I've worked in the field often for many years, they aren't doing that, and so the supervision seems to be one of the biggest issues. I know there's a couple here tonight that's attended a couple of my forums. Mayor Reardon, thank you for joining me for one of those. So bless you. I've learned that before you can fly, you gotta run before you can run, you gotta walk, and before you walk, you gotta crawl. So if I, as a county legislator, hope to get a resolution passed, my idea, and, you know, maybe a county resolution is not needed, but I've spoken to the Dutch County Department of Mental Hygiene Commissioner Kenneth Glad on this issue. I've asked him to come to attend one or both. He couldn't. I'm suggesting that he come to Rhinebeck to hear people's concerns directly. And I think that supervision is obviously an issue. And it would be nice if it weren't just me and the folks in this room concerned about the supervision. I think that, you know, I think in their heart parts, the county executive and the county mental hygiene commissioner, they are concerned. I just want us, they need to come out publicly and hear local folks' concerns and make a commitment to make sure that the nonprofits in that building are getting our tax dollars. They survive on county tax dollars, and they should be held accountable. So my resolution just asks, for now anyway, for Kenneth Glad, the county mental hygiene commissioner, to come to Rhinebeck and unopenly hear people's concerns and issues. So let's see if that can happen. I've already talked to my colleagues about it. If you agree that that would be a pretty non-controversial baby step in the right direction, email all 25 of us at countylegislaters@dutchasmy.gov. I've been doing monthly forums for many years. I have another one tomorrow. You're all invited to. It's nothing exciting or earth-shattering. It's just if people want to come and raise hell with me about whatever, or complain, or give me ideas, whatever. It's tomorrow night, Wednesday night, 7:30, just across the way at Rhinebeck Town Hall. I'm not going to run through the whole litany of exciting initiatives I'm working on and ways to save tax dollars and things I've accomplished. It's just a monthly forum. People can come and, whatever, complain or give me ideas. Again, tomorrow night, Wednesday night, 7:30, across the street, Rhinebeck Town Hall. I try to bring this issue up every year around July or August, the issue of air quality in Dutch County. There's well over 30,000 people in Dutch County with asthma, bronchitis, or emphysema, according to the American Lung Association, New York State. The incinerator in Poughkeepsie funded by our tax dollars is not helping. Unfortunately, the solid waste management plan was passed earlier this year that says, even if we recycle up to, now, right now, we're at about 8% or 22%, depending on what figures you trust. The plan was passed saying that even if we raise the recycling rate in the county, let's bring the garbage in from the other counties to burn at the incinerator, which is not helping anybody. The volatile organic chemical emissions, the particulate emissions have increased over the last decade. So I just bring that up because it's easier to wake people up to air quality issues in July, August than it is in the fall. Val Summerbill, who's the county budget director, addressed us this past Thursday at the Budget, Finance, and Personnel Committee. She said that we are on pace in Dutch County to set a record as far as foreclosures. In 2009, there were something like 1,628 foreclosures. This year so far through the end of July, there have been over 1,000 foreclosures, 1,025. Why do I bring this up? In Richmond, California, they're making waves all across the country. I'm not going to read this whole piece, but just briefly. "They are moving forward on a plan employed by other towns and cities to ask big bank lenders to sell underwater mortgage loans at a discount to the city of Richmond if the owner consents, and seize those homes through eminent domain if the banks refuse. The city has committed to refinancing those homes for owners at their current value, not what is owned." There's about 10 million homeowners in this country who are underwater to the tune of $750 billion. And it's a big issue there, you know, not just in Poughkeepsie, all over Dutch County. I'm trying to build support for something like that here. The last thing I'll say is there's a front-page article in today's Poughkeepsie Journal about the jail issue. The, you know, bills have to be paid. There's messaging. The messaging that I was doing over the last week is bills have to be paid. That's a different issue from, you know, whether expanding the jail. But there's some weird, wild, and wacky things going on. The front page of today's Poughkeepsie Journal says, the Assistant Majority Leader says that it's already budgeted for the jail pods, the 200 new jail cell pods to be put. Well, I think you were there, Mayor Reardon, at the end of last night. I asked a question because last Thursday Valerie Summerbill, the county budget director, told us all that a vendor's been selected, ProteusOnDemand.com from Georgia, and I was like, wow, a vendor's been selected? Like, we didn't really get a chance to vote on that. And so I asked about that, and Rob Rollison, the chairman, last night said, well, you know, we're looking for this to be part of the 2014 budget. We're going to be deliberating on this in November, December. Basically, I thought that Rollison was telling me and everybody that the pods had not been budgeted for, which is completely different from what's on the front page of today's Poughkeepsie Journal where legislators must say that they've been budgeted for. There's some crazy things going on. I'll just say one more thing. On May 28th, the county executive, at the committee of the whole, all 25 of us in the county legislature, on May 28th, the county executive said, you know, anybody who says this $1.2 million bond is about a new jail is just dishonest, disingenuous. This is not about a new jail. And then a few weeks ago, he's on cable vision with Kerry Donovan underneath the leaders saying, the June 10th vote in the county legislature, that was about a new jail. And I'm just like, aside from all these other ways and things that we could be doing, 50 mentally ill in the county jail, 50 women in the county jail, 20 teenagers, 70 state parole violators, 20 with bail of $2,000 or less, and you add that up, 50 plus 50 plus 20, that's 210 if you add up all those, 20 plus 70 plus 20 plus 50. Aside from all that, which is, and there's 165 being housed now, which is less than a 210. There's some really wild and wacky stuff going on with this jail issue. And things, democracy frankly is being subverted, and I ask people to wake up. And please watch the meetings. The meetings for the county legislature are online. There's something in Northern Dutch News about the CWA Verizon issue and the Voice Link. I just urge people to just do some Googling because there's some allegations made in a Northern Dutch News article, not by the writer, but by Verizon that are frankly untrue, and Verizon has been proven by the Attorney General Eric Schneiderman to be forcing this Voice Link on customers already in Hudson Valley, Catskill region. Thank you for your patience. I gotta run to the town clinic. And thank you, and I owe you again, sir, because I tried to read the papers every day. I did not know that Mayor Costa had passed away. And not only did you bring that to my attention, we got the, 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 the meeting ended, but you stayed for four hours. So if everybody doesn't know what a workhorse Jim Reardon is-
There was learning experience.
Yeah.
Good night, Joel. Thanks. Okay. Folks, you're here about 47 West Market, correct? Okay. Instead of waiting to plan his zoning, well, you probably want to stay for our whole meeting, though. Now, I'll bring you up to speed exactly where we are with this. Based on a meeting that we had with the property owner's attorney, we had requested information. Now, we had requested this information back at the end of May, and there was some lag time because of the property owner being out of town, his property manager being sick, et cetera, et cetera. So we've got to throw it out for more than a showtime. So there was a meeting between the village attorney and the property owner's attorney and our zoning enforcement officer. And they, the property owner's attorney was provided with a list of questions that we wanted, needed answers to. So their attorney said, okay, give me until the 26th of July, and I'll have these answers to. To his credit, the 24th of July, we got an answer to these things. And what we have discovered in this letter is that the property owner acknowledges that there are two tenants in that building, not three. We know for a fact Joel had his forum, and it was stated at that forum. Occupation Inc. Inc. was there. Lexington Center for Recovery wasn't there, but Hudson Valley Health was not there. At the second forum Joel hosted, Hudson Valley Health was there, okay? So we know there's three organizations operating out of this facility. Property owner either didn't tell us everything, or he's not aware there's a third tenant in that building. So the question is, what is the scope of this operation? So where we are right now is the village attorney has reviewed a letter that the zoning enforcement officer has crafted. I am expecting the village attorney to give the zoning enforcement officer a letter, the sign-off on it tomorrow, to go and send it to the property owner, and basically what this letter will be will be a cease and desist. They have the right to appeal. So when they appeal, of course, it goes to the zoning board, and then they go through the process that they should have gone through when we started this whole thing. You know, Joel's flyer here, I think, makes some very valid points, and I don't think anybody in this community, I don't think anybody desires the end result to be that these people that need these mental health services are thrown out and don't receive the treatments that they need. What we face as a challenge as a board is that we need to make sure that the zoning law is applied equally and fairly across the board to anybody and everybody. So our goal here is not to stop that operation from happening there as long as it's within the law. If it is within the law, then what it becomes is a management problem whereby the people that are running the facility, if there's problems outside the building on the community, those people are not managing these clients properly. Dutch County Department of Mental Health operated out of that facility for 25 years, and basically there were no problems. That all changed within the last year. So from a village perspective, that's where we're at right now. This letter will be being sent. And what our expectation is, once that letter is received, is that there will be an appeal filed. That's where we are. Okay? You have any questions? I hope I explained clearly enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Okay, carbon reports. Brent, wastewater?
For July, wastewater treated, 4.12 million gallons. Gallons of sludge, 56,994 gallons. Pounds of sludge processed, 7,410 pounds. Cubic yards of sludge processed, 14.6. Ferrochloride used, zero. And the reason why is we have now switched, we are using the new dilute dewatering sludge press has been put in place. We have a certificate of substantial completion, so that project is done. They were commencing operations on July 10th. It doesn't use the same chemicals, so generally got a, see copies of the certificate of substantial completion for you to sign. It had been approved by our engineer. This is all contractual, so we really don't have to do this at the meeting. Also, I work at Conklin Services. They completed the installation of the above-ground oil tank, the 1,000 gallon above-ground oil tank, so we're headed about there as well. Let's see, what else?
I noticed here it says MNO sanitation hall, 18,000 gallons of sludge. That was the temporary-
The wet sludge removal. What you're doing is squeezing the fluid out of the sludge to make it lighter.
So that's no longer, MNO's no longer going to be there, right?
Right, yeah. So what we're going to do now, we're not going out for chemical bid. We already announced Lisa did the posting for the sludge removal for a one-year contract. But we're going to wait on the chemical bids because we want to see what kind of chemical usage we're, we're going to be exposed to with this new treatment process. So we're going to kind of gauge it, use our old chemical supplier on a month-to-month basis. And then when we have an idea what it's going to take with the new process, we're going to go out to bid annually for that as well. So that's basically- We went on to, yeah, that's all I have.
That's it for wastewater?
Yeah. Oh, you have to, I thought you sent that out already.
Okay, so, you know, this is cut and dried. It's a proposal to all zoning, and the specifications are in here, so.
Normally, we do, we go out to bid on both chemicals and sludge removal, but because we're not prepared yet to determine what our chemical needs are going to be, we're just going to do the sludge.
Okay, so I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve that resolution to post the notes for sludge removal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Still with it?
I just got one question, technical question. This new sludge press uses less energy or less electricity, Anthony was telling me.
Yeah, it's more efficient and uses less labor as well, and it's cleaner. Doesn't smell in the building much of these things.
And are you an ideal one to use it to the chemicals?
And the less chemical usage. Gee, it's going to be cheaper in that part, too.
Okay, that's it for wastewater, right? You have a shower here up at the water department.
Thank you for giving me so much time, man.
Uh-oh.
Got my news.
My clock is ticking.
We have net treatment of water in July of 13,530,000 gallons. In preparation to the painting in the low lift station, we had to repair the dehumidifier, and that is done. Work started at the low lift, I'm sorry, work started at the gallery, at the pipe gallery. They cleaned and scraped and starting Thursday and Friday, they're going to put a first coat of paint on there. So that is working well. Some of the paint is already there. A few more has to come. As far as our water distribution system is concerned, we replaced a 4-inch valve on South Street and Route 9, and we replaced a 6-inch valve on Route 9 and South Street. And that was all in preparation to disconnect the two 4-inch lines that came under Route 4, under Route 9, and deactivate them on the east side of Route 9. That was done, and the front line, the 4-inch front line that goes north and south on Route 9 is now free of these two lines that were feeding us down there. A timely review of the consumption data on about one-third of the water accounts pointed to a need for some software adjustment. The effect of the adjustment affected a small number of accounts, and we have implemented this. Now, I'm requesting approval of a state fire code enforcement officer, Norman Nichols, whom I contacted to help us in pressure and flow testing of some of the 4-inch lines in the village. And I've sent you a copy of that. Unfortunately, I sent it a little bit late, so you probably didn't have enough time to peruse it. The reason we are, I want to do this, I started out in February and March already and had discussions with you on the board and privately to get a handle on our distribution systems in terms of what the flows are, what the valves are, and so on. And I had a number of discussions with the, our village engineer about this. And essentially to learn, for me to learn and for Tom to learn what is involved. If you ever want to go for a grant proposal, to how to structure the data to do that. And the village engineer has helped me and Tom, and gave me information. It was like a course in fluid dynamics. And I asked her then to put this in writing, including suggesting the informant of the data and so on, yes, and that. And she's just going to charge us about $1,000 for this, for this work. So the why is in order to help figuring out what is, how to improve the distribution system. And an answer has helped us with what to do, go about it now, is how to do it. And this fellow, Nichols, was actually, I had talked in February, March already to the former fire chief to see if he could get any help in doing some of the flow testing, and suddenly nobody there could do it, he had no equipment to do it. I again approached Kevin Asher then, and Heath was here with me. And they suggested the company in Hyde Park, Nichols, and that they are very good because they use them here for some of their equipment. And I called them and I said, well, it's my son really who is the expert in flow testing and so on, and it's Stan Nichols. And I contacted him, had a meeting with him and Tom last Thursday, and asked him to give us a proposal to do the following kind of test. We know about where the 4-inch lines are that are traveurated and have been 110, 115 years old. And we wanted to sort of target where the problem is, so we wanted to take a wide view of the thing, of the system. And then later on, so I want to do that this year, and then to do the detail work next year. And we want to do that during the time we brush the hydrons. So the proposal that I have sent you has to do with a, two parts. And one of them is blocks of four hours where he is working with us and helping us to take the data. He brings his own equipment to do that. And our guys, Tom and Justin, and or Tony, get to learn how to use this and how to do this job. So we want to, we think that with six blocks, we can probably sort of get an overview of the system.
Six four-hour blocks.
Six four-hour blocks. Get an overview of the system. You may not need a six of them. One of the blocks has to be where we get what we think is a good pipe. And so we get the characteristics of the pressure and so on, so we can calculate for the bad pipe.
So we'll go, we'll target a good pipe, a 0.01 first?
A 0.01 first, right. Okay, so it's to get a baseline, right. So all of this work will be done in the October timeframe. And the cost of it was about, you want a little bit more, I discussed a little bit later, but it came down to about, the maximum was $5,200, $5,250, I think it is. After that, the next year, we can do the rest of the detailed work ourselves. And again, the reason I want to do that is to characterize our system, because we don't know what we have. Once we know what we have and can improve it, it also has a positive effect on our insurance costs.
Okay, just explain to me the scope of what we're going to do this year. I know you say detail work. What's the difference between those two?
This year, as a rough example, we're gonna, we're gonna test a hydrant, say, on Crossmore, okay, and Chestnut, okay, and another one on Route nine, okay, and take sample there. Now, this is just, we have to decide exactly what we're gonna do, similar maybe on Livingston, and similar on north and south of Route nine, okay, just to scope out where we think the major problems are, flow and pressure, residual pressure problems are. Once we know what it is, then we have, then we're gonna go deep, you know, piece by piece along the road on either Chestnut or whatever, you know, and take measurements in these particular areas and get a detailed profile of the performance of the fire happens. Now, if you see that we have serious problems, say, between two hydrants, say, between Route nine and Overeem or something like that, we, I found out that we can probably even send the probe down and see how bad the line is.
And plus the camera.
The camera, yes.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this correctly, the first thing we're gonna do is go to the four-inch line that we know is a fairly new line.
Either four or six.
Test that to get a baseline.
To get a baseline, yeah.
All right, and then you're gonna go to areas where you know you have four-inch lines.
Yes.
And say, what you said, might be on Crossmore, it might be on South Port, you know, that you're gonna test one hydrant in those areas.
One, not two, there is two. You have to have, you have to have one running and the other one measured.
Okay, all right, and that'll be what we'll do this year?
That's what we'll do this year.
And that'll give you an idea of how it is in that area, and then you'll expand from that area next year.
And expand from that area next year, okay? We want to do that only in October, because we don't want to stress, overly stress the distribution system, but we have to blow, open it up anyway, so we may as well take the particular ones, okay?
So I- We won't go to too many valve problems.
Yeah, well, that is another thing, okay? Because if you do, then we have to fix the valves first, you know, so we can do that during, during the year. I still don't do that. We're gonna, while you have, talking about valves, we're gonna do one after the fair is over, and that is a critical one, probably in the area of Glad Avenue and Route nine, but we don't wanna fiddle with Route nine, but we have a traffic, so we're gonna do that after this. We're gonna do your hydrant, your area, in the next week or two. So, I don't know if I need a motion here to approve-
You're gonna expend the funds, you have, need a motion.
Yeah, but before we do this, what about the thousand dollars that I asked, that we're gonna get a bill for, for getting Nancy to do some of the work that you can lay out?
She gave you a cost estimate of a thousand dollars?
She gave, she told me a thousand twenty-five. The work is already done.
Make a motion for both of you.
So I want to make a motion to approve for a thousand twenty-five dollars for the village engineer to provide-
Erwin Anthony.
I'm sorry.
Say, Erwin Anthony.
Yes, for Erwin Anthony to supply a hydrant flow work plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, you've already spent that much, right?
No, I haven't spent it. Billy said I have, I have stuff to do.
She did? I thought you said she already did the work.
She did the work, yes, but the money's not spent.
Right, well, pay her, but she's already done the work. Yeah. Well, my, my question there is, do we have to get bids for, well, the second part of your proposal here, I have questions, I guess, for all.
What's the first part?
So, anything else on this thousand twenty-five, Erwin Anthony? You have a motion?
I just have a problem spending the money before, you know.
Okay, so that's something we can address afterwards.
Okay.
Brian, any questions?
What, what did she do? This is the, you hear, then what did she have to do in addition?
What she did is she essentially gave us a work plan and educated us what to do to flow and pressure test the-
So she thought this was a really good practice, like, this is a really good practice, then? This really-
She showed me that.
This is the bid from-
Oh, yeah.
This is, I mean, this is a practice that really fares off these-
Yes.
-problems with water.
Right, right.
And she discovered that.
Well, she, she discussed with Nancy, she told us how to go about doing it.
Okay.
And the reason we will do it is to improve our infrastructure, so that was like seed money. And I have talked to the board about this, starting in March, and three or four times about what I was going to do.
All right, let's, there any more questions about the-
Erwin Anthony.
Or Erwin Anthony, you worked for a thousand twenty-five dollars?
No.
Okay. All of them favor approval?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? So vote. Okay. So what we need to do going forward is anytime we expend village funds, the board needs to approve it before the work gets done. Because once the work's done, we have to pay the bill, all right? You know, and it's-
What?
It could be that the board didn't want to spend money, so.
Now, my question is, when we, since I asked our attorney something, do I have to go to the board for us and ask, can I ask?
You should run it by me, because I might be able to answer your question. If I can't, then I will say go to the village attorney.
And, you know, we have to buy bolts to fix one of that, some of the pipes, and-
Well, we have, we have-
So, so how much, I guess the question is how much, how much-
We have a procurement policy, and that's what we should be following.
You're supposed to get written bids, even in email bids, whatever, but you have to leave with a five hundred dollar amount of stuff.
And again, to come back to this village engineer thing, this engineer was appointed to be our village engineer, and we use them for these types of projects, but we still need to approve the expenditure of money.
Now, I, the way the valves is, I have a lot of questions for, you know, telephone time, and emails, and so on, and everything sort of evolves.
And that's just, that's the communication thing. When you're, when you're putting all of these ideas, you get these ideas behind you, and put this plan together that you want to discuss with the village engineer, then what you should do is be sending this group emails and saying, this is what my plan is, this is why I want to do it, and bounce it off everyone.
Yeah, and I, I have actually done this, if you look at the minutes it can do, it's on there.
Exactly. But we shouldn't tell the engineer, do the work, the board approves the expenditure. Okay?
So now comes the second part.
Okay. Go ahead.
I want to make a motion to approve Daniel Nichols to do flow testing and pressure testing for the village at a cost of about fifty-two hundred, twenty-five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Okay, my first question is, should we get bids for this? More than just one bid we have. When I cut down trees, I gotta get bids. Even though it's the same people we use all the time, I still have to get bids.
Well, the reason we, I didn't get bids is, first of all, because I don't know who does this kind of stuff. And now I can go to our village engineer and ask if they'll, to help with the bid.
Well, again, what we, no, again, what we should do here, we should follow the procurement policy, which says what the dollar thresholds are, and what we're supposed to do. We don't necessarily have to advertise for bids. We can get cost estimates, estimates from contractors, which we do, you get tree, tree removal estimates.
Yeah.
All right, but that's what we should be doing, is follow the procurement policy that says that after- What's the, what's the trigger for three written estimates? What's the dollar amount?
Oh, it's five hundred dollars.
Okay, so that's what we should be doing.
But-
All right, so in this case, what you could say is, say to Nancy, or Tom, or whoever, the fire company, I'm sure they know people who do flow testing, say to them, who's out there that I can call?
Well, I could ask the fire company, that's the only guy we know.
See, that's the thing, now, there's an exception for specialty service contracts. If you feel like you'd be completely wasting your time trying to get two other bids, and this is the only person who really does this thing, then I would be willing to vote for it tonight if it feels like you wouldn't be able to find two more.
Sure, and that's, that's the thing, I mean, you know, the first thing we have to say to ourselves is we have a policy, and then we have to make every effort to abide by that policy. If it's, like Brian says, specialty services contract work, there could only be one person out there that does that particular thing, then your hands are tied.
Well, I can try to find out anymore. I don't know who to call, but I'll call our engineers, certainly, and call the AMA, I guess it's American Water Association.
I mean, it's, it's our responsibility to follow the proper procedures and try to be as cost-effective as we possibly can.
We flush in what, October?
October.
Okay, so we have a little bit-
We have, we have a little bit, little bit of time.
And if we, if we call a special week?
Special week, okay.
We love having meetings, look at all the minutes we have to approve tonight.
I just have a few more questions. So are there any major problems now with water pressure anywhere?
We don't know, really.
Well, let me tell you what I find out. We duck up on Route nine across from Astor. There is a four-inch water line on the east side of Route nine, and we duck it up and cut it off to make the separation from the, from Astor home. If we, a piece of pipe was took out-
I think, I think it's downstairs.
No, that's up on that, that's a building. That one was worse, it was like two inches of a four-inch pipe left, okay? There's anecdotal evidence of people who have very little water pressure on the second floor over here, and it isn't a kind of, it's a problem. Every time we dig up a pipe and cut a piece out, we see huge amount of tritriculation inside, inside the pipe.
Can you explain to me, simply because I don't understand hydrology, so if somebody on the second floor is having a problem, what does the four-inch line on the street have to do with that? Because it would seem to me that if the person on the first floor has adequate flow, why isn't the second floor, given the restriction would be in there somewhere?
No, the, the problem is because there's other people on the street who are using it, so, so the flow is, gets disrupted, gets useless.
Goes to the easiest place first.
And, and then there's not enough backflow coming up, and then it's probably getting up with the water.
Okay, I got you. The demand is too high for the size of the pipe that's out there? Okay.
So if we go through this whole process of finding out whether it's problems, I thought we talked in the past about trying to do all, all different things at once, like, say, what if you find a problem on a road, then we just pave it, and hopefully, say, South Parson Street is okay?
And we talked about drainage, and we talked about streets.
Right.
So definitely, what have you done about drainage, what you have done about streets? I didn't, I decided, you know, I don't want to wait, I want to get, get going.
What we have to do is, if we, we find significant problems here, then we have to address it going forward.
Well, it's a fire safety issue, so no question.
Well, that's my question, do we have any?
We can't, we can't wait to repair a street because we're waiting to get grant money to do a water main repair, you know? In the same token, we can't, we can't stay or hold off significant projects that need to be accomplished with the hope we're gonna get money on the fruit tree in the backyard, you know? Yeah, it's, it's noble to say, all right, we're gonna do the drains here, we're gonna do the electric lines here, we're gonna pave the street, we're gonna fix the storm drains, all of that kind of stuff, but unless you have the money in hand, you can't do it all.
And all I'm doing is getting, getting ready to do some, like, tools.
Right.
And so, so actually to characterize it, you know?
Uh-uh, one more question.
Sure.
Before I forget, you all, you said detail work will be done next year, is that gonna cost money also?
This detail work will, by and large, be done by us.
Okay.
One of the reasons, a lot of this work I can't do now is, number one, I'm, at least one person down, okay? I don't have to write on a skill set to do the work, and I, I hope that by hiring somebody who is a top-notch guy, okay, he can teach us, so-
Or a woman.
I'm sorry?
Could be a woman.
Guy or a woman.
A top-notch person. To, yes, absolutely, absolutely, I apologize. So, you know, it's also a teaching, a method of teaching us, because none of our people has that kind of expertise. They won't, they won't do it. Tom is really eager to do it, to, to increase his skill, but if you do it without knowing what you're doing, you spend a lot of time, and you don't have a lot of time. You have very, very, you know, all the issues that we've been dealing with.
It's an educational experience for all of us, for all of our people.
Okay? You'd like to answer?
That's it, those are my questions.
Other items here, we haven't found anybody qualified water handler, so what we're planning to do is we want to grow our own, and- And I would request that we put a job opening internally only for people, first a job only internally, okay?
Make a motion?
I want to make a motion to open a job, a posted job, opening for a-
Internal?
Internal, well, internal job opening for a worker in the water.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? So vote.
I want to retain the rich to do for another three months. These three months are over, I believe, mid, mid-September, early September.
Maximum of three months.
Yeah, for a maximum of three months, I have many motions to add. I want to retain the rich to do for an additional three months, or so, temporarily.
Maximum of three months.
Oh, this is-
Because if we hire somebody, then-
Then, then, that's right.
We're not keeping them for a whole day, it's for a maximum of nine days.
For a maximum of three months.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. How long has he worked already?
I think two or three.
He's coming up, he's coming up to the end of ninety days.
So then-
We can extend it.
We can extend it without-
We just have to go through county personnel and let them know that it's an extension because of vacancy. That's all. We did, did the same thing down at wastewater.
As a laborer, but yeah, there's a certain amount of, isn't it? He's certified.
He's certified.
Registered.
Right, so as a laborer, you can keep extending it for as long as you need to, with somebody who's actually certified, I have to find out. So wastewater, like, add it over, or what add is-
There's the ability to extend because of extenuated circumstance. We just have to clear it through county personnel.
Okay.
Okay?
So we haven't voted yet. Any more discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So vote. Go ahead.
I found that, we found that the additional Rita Astor home, and they had used a hundred and ninety-three thousand gallons of Rita home, how it happened.
Do we know when it was put in?
We think about a year ago, at the time-
It was part of the expansion?
Part of it, part of the expansion. And I planned to build it.
And we know what it's called?
I heard it was official, I'm not sure.
Okay, so you want to contact Aster and ask for the explanation?
Yeah.
What's that?
We can tell us. Okay.
We need an answer, you know? Then nobody's allowed to tie it to our system.
But in, anyway.
Without authorization and stall meters.
So they're gonna be built back for a hundred and ninety-three thousand?
No, we, we, I planned to jump, jump, because it's weird, we're going to do this, for the rest of the city.
Yeah.
All right, um, the next item is a, I got a, Pat gave me a, well, no, let me, let me go that differently. We had an issue a little while ago. When I, when I went through the, the software analysis and, and consumption analysis, I wanted to get a whole bunch of data really fast, and was told we can't do it, can't personalize it, we have a page, a page, a page, and we can't bring it out and transfer the information. What was already in the work at the time is a, an upgrade to the utility building system modification from SEI, which is the Software Consulting Association, that's doing our business here. And apparently, the town of Shogak had asked them to do that as well, and, and they thought we could use it as also. So this is, costs about four hundred dollars for the software upgrade, and that is affecting Brent a little bit, and me a lot. And the cost of that is, as I said, is four hundred dollars. It gives us the capability of actually taking individualized the data that we want to put down in the system. So I would like to make a motion to, to, can, to approve this, and I guess I have, or Jim, or somebody has to sign this. There is a condition listed on there, but I looked at the terms and conditions, it's pretty straight, straightforward, but I was hoping Rich was here, but I can't send him this.
Please, you can put a copy of his form over scan and send it to him.
So it needs to be authorized, I think I can probably do that, I don't know, from the scene. So I want to make a motion to, uh, to ask S E A to, uh, add this, this module for building.
Does everybody understand what this is for? He's gonna be able to pull data out of the system onto, right now, the way that reports come out, it's pages and pages and pages. He's gonna be able to segment the data that he needs, gets water in person.
Yeah, and, and put it also on, on inspection.
Inspection, okay.
I agree.
Second?
Oh.
No, I already have a motion.
Second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted.
Uh, I want to talk about updating the village code, I briefly talked to you about the gym, and, and I'm talking here strictly about the water part of it. There's a number of issues, one of them came up with, with the audit of, uh, how we billing. Uh, our code says fifteen days, we'll be using twenty-five days, and the, the auditors will be either one or the other. Now, they didn't care about which one it was. Uh, there are, we, we have, we charge for hiding fees, it's not in our code book, okay? We charge, we own us twenty-five dollars for connection, it's not in our code book. Rich had a couple of issues, as I remember, one from that to do with the arch district, uh, code for, for water contract and water contracts. There are two issues on here. Uh, one of the newer things that is creeping up with our new water meters that we have. We can actually, uh, test flow of, uh, during nights, you know, very low flow, and, and it remembers the data. And we can print out, you know, distribution for twenty-four hours, many days, you know, how much water is used, and what hours, and so on. And we can use this for, uh, probably tell if the.
This has to do with code issue?
It has to do with the code issue, because the next thing I'm gonna tell you, this is gonna cost money to do. And, uh, if, if you want.
I know it's gonna cost money to amend the code, but.
No, it costs money to, to, to do the test, and, uh, if you do the code, you know, if, if you redo the code, I think we need to put something like that in there where we tell the people that we can.
When you're talking, you're talking about a multitude of different issues here, what it contains in the code. So I think what you need to do is define and get on paper for us, proposals you suggest to make for amendments.
That wasn't, it was just one, one item.
Yeah, and that's kind of like immediate behind the work scenes work, and then once we have all of these things in front of us. We could then say, okay, if we agree we're gonna do this and send it to the public hearing, also. But until we have all of that in front of us.
Now, now, that particular issue I'm talking, talking about, that's actually some immediate, uh, potential, because, uh, he, uh. I had actually stopped Pat to, to send out these notices, so telling people that we can do this, because, uh, they come back and they want to have, uh, uh, a testing done of their, of their system. It takes us an hour, so for two people, two people, one hour in each, and order, look at the data, take the radius, make, make a chart, and then send it back to them. And I said, we cannot do that without getting compensated for it, so that's why I'm bringing, bringing.
You need to walk through some kind of like a business plan site from the board to be able to take a look at it.
So that, uh, that, that is about it now. I, I think what we, we ought to pass that kind of a rule of how we want to do this project, and you're saying that I should come up with details first?
Bring us to the business plan. And then we can determine, look at it, and we can talk about the issues that you think need attention, and then we can move forward from that one. Until we have the information in front of us, we can't say, alright, we're gonna have a public hearing to amend the code.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm, I'm not saying this, you know, because I'm sure there are other issues, you know?
We got tonics, zoning, you know, there's all kinds of amendments.
And we want to handle that subject.
You know, right now, the immediate thing looming on the horizon is the events code and fairgrounds and zoning, and we're not gonna hold that up. To try and tie all of these other things in. What we need to do is develop the plan you want, we need to develop the plan for the zoning code. We're gonna go ahead with the fairgrounds and the events code, get that out of the way, and then try and lock everything together in a public hearing for the rest of this stuff. If we determine we want to do a public hearing. You know, depends upon how many amendments we're doing, we could be here for weeks.
Uh, that's the end of the, that's the end of the board. Uh, I just wonder if I should, I have to give about fifteen seconds, fifteen seconds to talk about our consulting, once you have a registered.
Alright.
Thanks for going in.
We just flickered.
Uh, village also, uh, a data, uh, we consumed about six thousand kilowatt hours in the month of July. Uh, we generated thirty-two hundred kilowatt hours, and we saved about five hundred and ninety dollars in July, and, and our, our, our sixty cents.
That was with the air conditioner on.
Made it to full time, yeah, and some didn't, but that's true. So, anyway, five hundred dollars saved, five hundred and ninety dollars saved. Uh, I called central Hudson about the change in the lights, and they haven't started yet, but we're changing the.
Oh, streetlights?
Streetlights, yeah.
They have completed their work down here by C V S with all the transporters.
And now there's a wonderful space for the.
Okay, is that for water?
Thank you, Heinz, thanks for doing this comparison.
Okay, fire department. Report for the month of July. EMS calls in the town twenty-one, in the village twenty-four, for a total of forty-five. Fire calls seventeen in the town, nine in the village, for a total of twenty-six. Motor vehicle accidents, five in the town, zero in the village, for a total of five. For the month of July, total town calls, number forty-three, village thirty-three, for a total of seventy-six calls. Year to date, in the town, a hundred and forty-nine EMS calls, eighty-three fire calls, motor vehicle accidents, twenty-four, for a total of two hundred and fifty-seven calls in the town. In the village, EMS calls, one fifty-seven, fire calls, fifty-five, motor vehicle accidents, six, for a total of two hundred and eighteen. So year to date, EMS, both municipalities, two hundred and twenty-six. Fire, a hundred and thirty-nine, motor vehicle accidents, thirty, grand total, four hundred and eighty-five responses so far this year, through the month of July. We have. Received from Ken Scadathood, who is Vice President of Fire Department Inc. Uh, paperwork on two new members. Uh, William Deck, second. They want to add him as a new member of the fire company. And we also have Xavier Christian Mulhern as a new member of the fire company. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve these two gentlemen as new members. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, so voted. Just a little thought process on my part, I'll talk to Heath about it when he returns. Uh, the town's gonna be getting their budget negotiations, uh, beginning next month. And the thing would be who of us to look at the fire contract that has not been renegotiated since two thousand and eleven. So I'm gonna sit down with Heath, and I talked to Andrew Campbell today, and, uh, you know, we'll get Kevin Nash and the other officers involved, and listen, we'll talk over the fire contract. And, uh, decide if we need to make any adjustments, and then be prepared to go to the town board, so that they can include it in the budget process. Alright? Uh, streets department, go ahead, Alex.
Okay, road repairs were done on Montgomery Street and Anstruck Drive, where there were potholes, the areas were milled. Uh, formed fixed base was done and the resurfaced with blacktop. Uh, the Beach Street intersection on Route three oh eight was milled out and also replaced with blacktop. Catch basin repair was done, has been done, uh, seven basins have been replaced. Um, catch basin on North Park and South Parson.
Seven basins have been repaired.
Two tops.
We have repaired seven basins, replaced two tops.
Okay. Repaired seven basins, replaced two tops, you got it.
Go calm.
Yeah. Sometimes I have to, uh, ad lib here. Uh. Okay, the catch basin that Heinz was worried about there on North Park and South Parson, it was clean, and the pipe was flushed.
Nice job, Nick.
Thank you. And, uh. There was stone added at the end of the pipe that exits into the mini park to help disperse the water. Yeah, let's go, there's a little fence there. Uh, they have been doing road repair cutting. They've been doing road repair, comma, cutting out the bad spots and replacing the blacktop. Tree trimming at the intersections and sidewalks have been done, which were needed. Repairs have been done on the backhoe, lift cylinders. They leak, and then they fix them, and then the other one leaked, and they fixed that. And these cylinder replacements have been done in-house. The leaf back, Mike's been getting that ready for the upcoming leaf season. Um, he's a new impeller, housing liners also have been ordered. And they will be doing tree work this season. Um, I just wanted to make a note, I don't know if you're gonna say something later on, that the garbage and recycling ends this month? Um. And I don't know if legally I can say where to go to, or.
What, what I would suggest is that everybody understand that the cardboard will be picked up on the twentieth for the last time. Paper's already all done.
Right.
Uh, trash and recycling, the twenty-seventh of August is the last day that the building dryback will be picking up. From that point on, people have options, they can either contract with a private caller, or they can go to town hall, and they can discuss with the town hall. The hours and the use of the transfer station. Basically that's it.
And the other note I have written down is the major, uh, South Parson's street repaving was started yesterday. And it is expected to, uh, last no more than two weeks. I know Jim's been on top of this, working with the engineer.
Yeah, well, we're gonna be well underneath that timeframe, uh, we did that just in case there was a stretch of really bad weather. It doesn't appear that's gonna be a reality, the weather's gonna be pretty good. They pretty much have the physical billing. Preparation part of it finished, because of the rain today, they weren't able to crack seal and shim. So that'll happen tomorrow, and then they should be able to pay it on Thursday and be all done. That's it, that's our timeline.
What about, uh, sprays?
Strikes will do afterwards.
I, I have one question, did you have a question? You, I, I, I did water, and I, I had this grease right next to it, and I said, take it out of there. I'm gonna use, pour, pour the water, and flush down the street, you know, and, 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 take it down there. You don't have to go out six times a day. And that's because you're dying down the middle or something like that. If you go out in the winter, put the water in the, in the stream.
Do they have the ability to pump it and stream in?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Long as they got water.
I'd just like to make...
Not any much carbon you've been out there?
No. Uh, Carla Russo from Hudson was the lowest bidder on this guy. Um, I don't know if we wanted to talk about skid steers or...
Up to you. Mike needed to reach a decision. You're ready.
Well, I wanna talk to Mike more about this.
Okay.
You plan on having a special meeting sometime?
We can have a special meeting.
Okay, okay.
I do have one question though.
Go ahead.
Did, um, anyone look into chips already, the leaf part of it?
Yes, it is chips already. I spoke with, uh, Dorian Bolzappel, she did the research for me, and it's just reimbursable. The idea is though that if you want to buy the attachments, you buy it all in one package, but if you're gonna buy the attachments later, they're, they will not be chips reimbursable.
And that's on our side of the...
Hundred percent, yes. Yeah. We get down every quarter. Every quarter we send a notice up.
Okay.
Right, so we'll get another one and then we submit for reimbursement.
Oh, it's like I said, you know.
Every quarter, yeah. Okay, just a little bit more information for you guys on the skid steer. I had Chrissy do some research for me and, uh, she gave me some numbers. And I was interested in how much we spent on stump grinding and milling etcetera. Uh, unfortunately, the paving contractor, when they do the work, doesn't break the milling out separately, so you have no way of separating that. If we have Artie Smith's most recent bill for the milling, which we probably don't have yet. All right, we could get a pretty good idea, 'cause he did this milling recently for this one life of mine. He didn't do any paving for us, he just did milling. He's done, when he did the milling down at Sunset Road, maybe that project was all included in his price. All right. Beaver stump grinding in two thousand ten, we spent five thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars in two thousand eleven, two thousand six hundred and fifty-three, in two thousand twelve, two thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents, and two thousand thirteen zero. Dave's Tree Service had ground some stumps, but, and it wasn't itemized, it was just included in the price. So, if you take Beaver stump grinding, you got fifty-two hundred and fifty-one hundred. Over the last two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, we spent ten thousand two hundred dollars on stump grinding. So, if you were to predict that you were going to follow those numbers historically in the future, you would look at, on this machine with all the attachments, forty-seven thousand dollars, you're looking at a four-and-a-half to five-year payback on the machine.
Just on the stump grinding?
But, just on the stump grinding part of it, all right? Payment knowing, of course, is gonna be more, shortened payback. But you also have to factor in wear and tear on the machine service and things like that.
So, who would do, who would do the service?
We, I mean, it was a major breakage, we might have to have the dealer, changing oil and all those types of things.
Can I get a whole chase of store?
Yeah, the garage.
Yeah, I believe, I have no, you know, uh, right for the garbage, garbage company.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But what, I saw, I saw...
Let me, let me finish, okay? All right, so, I had reached out, you guys saw the email that I sent to Kathy and so on, right? To see if there's any interest in a shared service agreement with the town, shared purchase agreement, I should say. And Kathy went through her numbers and over the last three years, she's only spent a little over two thousand dollars renting a similar type machine. So, she can't justify the cost for them. So, she had suggested that the town parks department and the cemetery look at, uh, how much they spend, and then maybe those three entities along with us can justify it. Bruce, Bruce Washington responded yesterday and said, no, there's no justification under town's park. So, we don't have the opportunity for a shared purchase agreement here, but we would be doing this all on our own. That's what I've got for you.
Now, the question is, we have a lot of issues with streets, right? With payday, rent, and taxes and so on. Why do we want to use the money for, for cats that you think, cats and dog cats, if you're paying rent for them?
Because...
Use the money for, for the street repairs?
Because when we look at it, and we said we spent ten thousand dollars in three years, this is the question we need to answer as a group. Spent ten thousand dollars in three years. Are we better off taking tips money, which is reimbursable, okay? Buying this piece of equipment, so over the period of years, we can save some money, okay? If we don't think we can justify that, we don't buy skid steer. That's what, that's what our decision is here. I mean, I'm giving, I'm giving you ten thousand dollars worth of reasons over the last three years to justify stump grinding, all right?
Well, where's some other...
Our option is to continue to pay some contractors.
What I have for you, so you can say...
Well, the other uses are for the snow removal, then in downtown area. You can use it on the sidewalks, so you don't have to use the, the backhoe and slam it on the sidewalks and potentially breaking the sidewalks. You can use skid steer, push the snow out. You can't do the whole thing at one skid steer. So we have a couple of the contractors that also have skid steers that we can use. The planer is, is for milling the road.
We have to leave by top patch.
Which, that's a big, that's a big number.
Like I said, we have got AC Smith's bill. I don't know how much you, what his bill was, which was most recent now. Yeah, we don't have the bill yet.
Sidewalks?
You can hear me.
Well, the other thing is to fix the sidewalks, yeah, with the tree roots are. Um, you grind, you can grind sidewalk, you got tree roots. That are looking the sidewalk.
It's a chew.
So, so, so we have...
I'm working to talk about that probably.
So, we have essentially, we have, we essentially have...
Sidewalk, tree.
We have essentially different use for it than, than the family.
Yep.
Much, much...
No, we do a lot more, we, we do different things than the town does, you know?
Yeah.
They don't do a lot of stump grinding, simply that you're dealing with rural roads most of the time.
And who are they doing all the stump grinding?
Yep. We're talking here now, we need to be done.
Yeah, we let a lot of the garden last year, yeah, 'cause we were anticipating our vines. Now that there's gonna be no garbage picking.
Well, no, typically what we do is we wait a while until we bunch them, and then have to stack them in for a whole day. We don't call them each day to do the stump.
Right.
Well, typically I charge you by the inch. That's how they charge. You know, if it's a twelve-inch stump or a twenty-four-inch stump. The bigger the stump is, the more fuel they use, the price goes up. You wanna talk to Michael more?
Yeah, because he, he wanted to make sure it was powerful enough for the, uh, for the planer.
So, he doesn't think I specked it up properly, is that what you're saying?
All right, I know.
I talked to the experts, I talked to people who sold, sell machines, and I said, this is what we are looking to do. This is their recommendation. Buy bigger machines, it'll cost more money, and we don't need bigger machines. And the bigger the machine is, the less moving, especially when you're...
Totally, totally.
I went and worked at Redox, they got an eighty-eight horsepower one, it's a monster.
This is a sixty-six, yeah.
How much is it paid?
Probably the usual stuff.
How much is it paid?
It's sandwich, like three months in.
That probably doesn't have the weight specifications on there. Yeah, I'll tell you. That's the other thing, we have to buy the trailer.
We'd buy a trailer cheap. All right, talk to Mike.
I'll talk to Michael and I have a special meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, you got anything else?
Uh, no, that's it.
All right, and the Big Belly was delivered yesterday, so we need to get that installed. As soon as Mike gets stump body, this paving project, we can get the Big Belly installed next week.
Okay.
All right.
We got this... Yeah, we're on the topic. We got that letter from the insurance company, seeing if they wanted to add those as additional insurance, which I assume they were...
Definitely, it's gonna be additional costs, I said, 'cause of the, uh, amounts that we pay for each one, so she's gonna get that too.
We're not ready to know anything about it. I mean, the ones that aren't adjacent to the streets, I don't hopefully even want insurance on them.
Yeah.
Like this one, we're gonna put down here for the handicap crosswalk case. People violate the handicap crosswalk areas all the time, so we wanna have insurance on that in case anybody runs into it, 'cause it's gonna be adjacent to the street. You guys think? Let's find out what the cost is. Mike will be able to be cheap.
It should be real, I don't know.
Yeah, for one.
About five, maybe a, we got four or five, it might be cheap. I don't know, you gotta charge the insurer, the trash company.
Yeah, we agree. That's the risk.
It's based, it's based on the value, right? Five thousand dollars, six thousand dollars?
Yeah, so, let's wait till we hear from the insurance company.
Okay.
All right. Okay, planes only. That's it for streets, right, Alan?
Well, now that you mention it, I mean, we, did we plan on putting one over here by the, are we gonna talk about that later, in other business?
I left that bull in your court. You gotta figure out how you wanna fund this. I told you I'll write that letter to the, uh, Cross Foundation. But if you wanna purchase additional to the big hoes, you have to figure out how you're gonna fund it.
Okay, but I mean, you decided this location over here by the...
There's a quote one there, they want a quote one there.
And also...
I, I'll come up with the locations. If you can come up with the money, I'll come up with the location.
Okay, okay.
And wipes out, wipes out two cans, wipes out two cans, what you have.
Right.
Right in front of the big, right in front of the...
More than that.
So, at least two, yeah, right, one extra.
Yeah, we empty those things four times a week.
In front of a coffee shop.
Yeah, for the coffee shop and for the, uh, where the, the tourist is.
We open, we empty Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We can empty it quick or it comes a week.
Okay, I'll be on top of that.
All right, find the money.
Find the money.
Show me the money, Alan.
Find the money.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, that's it?
Mm-hmm.
Planes only. Very popular, forty-seven West Market Street, just to bring you up to speed on the, uh, sign issues. Uh, it seems that the president who's out there has helped.
Run, let's find the side, the side police.
Uh, it has helped, uh, the people, some of the people that were, uh, taking, taking delivery of putting signs out, uh, illegally, that were part of the site plan, have moved them. We still have a couple of problems. There are gonna be some letters sent to these individuals who don't play and have... Which is louder than the fire truck and the air conditioner.
Fire truck.
Okay, so that's where we are with the signs.
I think Bob's looking for some direction now. He recommended that we prepare the parents' ticket and information, and then show them, and approach the people, say, this is what, what we're gonna be serving you. You know, right before you send it out. You see that in his report?
Yeah, I saw that.
I did get, I got his report while I was at work today, so I have a, he got there a letter. What is he saying?
To show them we're serious, take the parents' ticket and information to the violator and show him or her that we intend to serve this one, and give them one last chance to comply. He thought that would be a good approach, and then we would send it if they would, did not comply.
I don't agree with that. We've sent them cease and desist letters. And that's what the code requires us to do.
He says we would insist that to avoid prosecution. They give us a letter swearing they will not persist in binding assignment. I, I agree with you, that's fine.
I mean...
You can do that all along.
The one person in particular, we sent multiple letters to. Okay, that's it on that one. Police in court. Anybody have any questions? Incident reports, anything like that? Yeah?
No.
Uh, of course, Fair Week is next week, so there will be an increased presence of the road police. Uh, we will be running some overhead lines during Fair Week. And, uh, I'm gonna talk with Pete tomorrow about the speed trailer, making sure that's out all week, next week, actually starting this weekend. And move that around in key locations during Fair Week, keep the traffic, uh, informed about the speed limits. We still have some outstanding issues with the doors, the storage at the police station, so we had a meeting yesterday. Uh, there's gonna be a letter sent to the contractor to, uh, resolve those issues. And we still have a little bit of an issue with the, uh, uh, this plumbing system as far as the drains for the bathrooms and, uh, the contractor's supposed to be coming back to fix that one. Other than that, everything seems to be okay.
We still have money escrow?
Generator's up now, isn't it?
Yeah, the car's on one of the cars. Generator's been fine. Dog report, is that one of these? I didn't see one.
Yes.
This is, dog report from Jim. All right, picked up... What's that?
We can get it to our paramedic.
Right. Yeah. Uh, picked up a dog at the Ryne Beck Animal Hospital, someone found it, took it there. Andres Moss, and it says cleaning dog. And she was charged thirty dollars in order to get the dog back. Been a lot of complaints about Mr. Arnold on Mulberry Street. People are saying the dog is out in all kinds of weather. I've been checking it random, but I've never seen any danger signs. Uh, lost dogs have been another thing this month. Committee reports. How have we got on trees?
Trees, have they got the, uh, minutes that I sent to you? Any questions? One thing I'd like to say, we have a new tree commission member, Brian Del Pizzo. Uh, welcome Brian to our tree commission. He has a three-year term. He replaced Cynthia Fennell, and I'd like to thank Cynthia Fennell for her time that she put on a tree commission.
Okay, the only thing I wanna talk about now is this issue with this tree at Argent Road.
Right.
All the tree commission does is make a determination whether a tree has to be downed. That's their only responsibility. It's up to the village board to decide whether we take the action to remove the tree, all right? And they don't understand this.
No.
All right, it's up to us to make the determination, whether the villagers are gonna expend village money to try and improve the property or... I understand their concern, but they don't have any decisions they can make.
I know, but they just, they just wanted it in writing what their concern was. They know that they don't have anything to do with deciding on the tree coming down.
Well, I asked them to do, the tree does, you're gonna do that. So, my question now is, has, has this property owner, eighty-one Center Street, sent that letter?
Eighty-one Ar- Arnet?
Arnet, yeah. Is that a letter of herself?
To the owner itself, you know, the form.
Right, we make sure that I can stop.
It was just a courtesy letter one time that I sent to say that they, because they've been trying to get a hold of us, they don't have a response.
We need to send some type of a, uh, certified return receipt letter informing the property owner that they have, I'll talk about, they have X, X amount of days, we'll have to determine what days they're gonna be to have the tree removed, the village will remove it, and bill them, and if it's, uh, the bill is not paid, it will be a rebate on their taxes.
Okay, so we have some requests here. I'm gonna read each one and...
Go ahead.
Okay, the tree commission recommends the village board that Ellen Marp, he granted the, uh, permit to have the tree pruned on the side of her house. It's gonna be done by a private contractor. Uh, Susan O'Halloran at Three Calor- Carolina Drive, there's a tree there that's been damaged, and we're gonna try to save it. We're gonna have, uh, May Crawford of the tree commission do some pruning on it.
Okay, now, my question is, it says have May Crawford representing the village. Why does it say representing the village?
Maybe she wrote the wrong thing.
Because if May's doing this, she's doing it on her own. Well, that, that needs to be struck.
Okay.
And if there's an issue, the issue is between May Crawford and, and the person, not us.
Right, so...
May Crawford is not representing the village.
Right, I, I understand that.
Make sure the tree commission understands that.
Okay. Do you know what street I'm talking about, is it your name again?
It's on anybody's brothers.
Yeah, but tell me, the other person on the corner there. One side, one branch was taken off, was knocked off somehow.
Little trees and, uh...
Yeah, they're little.
Little tiny, two, one and a half kilometers.
There's a bunch of trees that need, there's a little tree need pruned in our area.
I used to do it.
So why do you have Mike in this?
Yeah, can those guys just go through?
Uh, okay.
That area?
They took, they took the workshop.
They took the workshop, yes, they did, they did.
So that's my point.
Okay.
Those employees are gonna do it, then the village will take ownership.
Okay, we'll have the village employees do this. All the problem, right? Okay, Cheryl Reifenberg at one nineteen Montgomery Street, uh, the tree commission recommends that the tree be cut down. It's pretty close to Central Hudson Lines, but based on the past, Central Hudson requests we've had, I don't think they're gonna take this down. It's farther away than, than other trees that we have, um, wanted them to take down, but we could still ask them first.
Always a good idea to ask first.
Right, right. They recommend that DeeDee Hunter at sixteen Livingston Street, he denied a permit to have the village prune a tree on her property. The tree does lean towards the house, but does not appear to touch it. And there's a sidewalk issue there. Tree commission's recommended they do a bridge over the root.
Well, if the sidewalk issue was from a street tree, then that's, we've said that's our responsibility.
Okay. So, could we hire somebody to...
We gotta go look at it.
Do a bridge, well, I have to look at it. We'd have to hire somebody to, uh, try to do a bridge over the root.
I wanna go look at it.
Uh, they recommend that David Miller Street, ninety-three East Marcus Street, be cut down. Small cherry tree, the, the village can do that one itself. The village highway department can do that one. And then there's also one at twenty-seven Chestnut Street that is, uh, a very small tree. Um, which the village can take down also, the highway department.
Okay, so my question here is, we have a tree, to remove a small tree, we want a plan by the tree commission. Why are we taking out a tree, the tree commission's got?
It's dead. It's, it was, it was about two years ago.
Doesn't say it was...
She hired someone to take it, to do it.
Okay, well, she hired someone to...
Didn't say anything about being dead.
Yeah.
I'm just kinda curious why we're removing the tree to the tree commission for that.
Yeah, it didn't, didn't make it.
Okay.
Does the village do that, or should we get it?
No, no, she's hired somebody. So I didn't, I didn't notice that there. And there's a question about some trees in, at the Woods' property, which Michael Fraser, the husband of Cecily, remembers back in the eighties. This has to be looked into by the...
Is that the one that fell down last week?
No, this is another one. This is a different one. Apparently, there was an agreement that the Woods would take care of trees on their property.
Okay, there was a big tree fell down there by that sidewalk last week.
Yeah, no, this is a diff, this is a different area. By the sidewalk one fell down?
Yeah, I think that's what they're talking about here.
No, this one's...
Not in the right way. Cecily told Brandon she was responsible for removing the tree. Also, Michael Fraser says that when the Woods' property became before the planning board in the early eighties, it was agreed to the village of not be responsible for the property along the sidewalk. And it's that blacktop sidewalk that comes up the hill, comes out to Astra Drive.
Yeah, and at one time we...
And I believe that's where this tree was, and there was a tree that fell down last week, and the Woods had to outcontract it a minute and a half.
Maybe it fell down since our meeting.
I don't know. It's the same one. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
But no, we, that's not our responsibility. That's their property.
I, I know, 'cause we, we talked about that pipe on the, the sidewalk, they passed and determined that's their property, that's their problem.
Yep.
Um, now, there's this other issue of, of Sequoia Nero with, with the, with the water department last month. Uh, you replaced the, replaced the pipe, and she wanted to go around the tree.
Still wanna go around Robinson Street, or South Street?
South Street, fifty-five South Street.
My, thank you, it's all dead. My input on this is that this issue came to us too late. Okay? All right, we really didn't know anything about this water line repair, and the sidewalk issue, and the tree, and all this stuff, all right? And she already had the work set up to happen, and sent me an email the night before at like ten o'clock at night. Of course, I didn't get the email. And then the water department was there, and Jeff Decker was there at seven o'clock the next morning, beginning the work. I get in my office at nine or nine-thirty, and I check, and here's this email from her, and she wants us to take responsibility for this. And she already hired to have the work done. It was a service line, I guess.
Well, the other issue she has is the sidewalks were, were up related by the tree roots.
Well, again, if the tree is creating a problem for the sidewalk, yes, then we will help out with that. Right, so we've gotta go look at it, we've gotta determine what needs to be done. But the water department, that's not our responsibility.
Okay, you wanna go look at it. You're not gonna go on a little walkabout?
We're doing more morning.
Signing vouchers.
Okay. I'm here till ten-thirty.
Okay, I'll be here. First thing in the morning.
So now I don't feel so badly because I'm losing so much time, and the water.
It's all because the water department wanted to do this work, that's why we're spending a lot of time on it.
I don't know. Go ahead.
That's it, Meg, Meg is, May Crawford is offering us some plantings to the village for free and...
Okay, I got a question for you about the two thousand fourteen tree plant. What about this fall, two thousand thirteen? Doesn't say anything about that. Are they doing anything this fall?
Yeah, we're doing something the first week in November, first Saturday in November.
Okay, so there was a question that I had brought up several times, I think over the last two or three tree plantings, was that there was trees that were supposed to be planted as part of the site plan over in Heinz and Brad's Development. Okay, in the circle part of it. And I had requested that if the tree commission was going to be doing some plantings, please plant those trees. And I don't think that's ever been done. And what we need to do, and I thought you had looked at one time, at the site plan, so that you knew where the trees had gone.
Well, we, we looked at the site plan, but it didn't say specific areas, it said, it said, it suggested trees to be planted. What right?
It should, it should have, have a location for the tree on the map.
So they suggested they have two trees on every property. And I think there's two properties, three properties that don't have any trees.
So I would like to see the tree commission include those.
Okay, but I, I believe that the site plan doesn't, is not that, even that specific, two trees on each property.
Right, no, we'll look at the site plan.
'Cause I did look at it with, with a camera.
Let's see Chuck, Chuck.
Yes, tomorrow morning, between a walkabout.
There might be some language.
Yeah, there was not specific.
I thought I had seen tree locations on the site plan, but it's been a while since I looked at it.
God, I got two people from Stortini Bill here. I got a lot of pressure on me.
You chose your poison.
There's another, there's another area that you mentioned, with the planning board, and that somebody was supposed to plant a tree, site plan, and the tree died, and they haven't replaced it.
Where?
Side Livingston Street.
There's part of site plan approval for a property order?
Mm-hmm.
Then the property owner should replace the tree.
Yeah, I'll look into that one too. The owner's case, I know, I know the number.
Is it Jessica L's place?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if that was a part of the site plan approval, that he was supposed to plant a tree and it's died, then he should be replacing it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay?
Okay, so, um...
And what's this? It says the donation of the perennials. They want to do some planting somewhere?
Yeah, the, yeah, we're talking about the V over by the hospital over there, the entrance to Rhinebeck there.
There's one lady plants all kind of stuff out there.
Yes, kind of, you know, she hasn't been, not that we expect it to, but she hasn't been on top of it. So, looking to beautify that for next year.
Okay, well, and my question is, is that, I know for a while the village was taking care of it, then all of a sudden this woman started taking care of it. Whose property is it? That we got to look at?
I believe it's the village, probably have to correct that.
If it's the village's property, then the tree commission can go ahead and just do something, as they would like to. But the issue arises then what's gonna happen as far as the maintenance?
Okay, and another, one other thing here. Cecily emailed me. I think I emailed you this today. She's on vacation now. Robert Lang, uncle, is one fifteen Marcus Street, requesting some pruning done, but we, the tree commission requests that's not to be done because that's more an aesthetic thing, as she quotes here. And there's no safety hazards there. So, that's across from the deli there.
So you guys will be talking about this in your next tree commission meeting, right?
No, we talked about it the last meeting. She forgot to put it on, she forgot to put it on the minutes. She sent me another email yesterday. So I make a motion that the, um, accept the treatment as read, as discussed. You don't have to approve, you don't have to approve of taking down the trees with the...
Taking down trees, yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we take down the trees discussed here and pruned, and the ones that has to be pruned.
All right, so the question is now, we're talking about taking trees down. Is Central Hudson gonna be involved? Will we go into them first?
Yeah, I might go to them first, for that one tree.
Because when you say take the trees down, that means the village board is approving that. We're gonna take the trees down.
Well, then we can leave that one for next month. So if you want to read the trees then...
You guys just take...
Okay, here we go. These are the pruning. Ellen Moore, I make a motion that we approve the tree commission recommendations. Ellen Moore, sixty-five South Street for pruning. That's the only pruning one.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, so voted.
Okay, now these are the takedowns. David Miller, ninety-three, I make a motion that we take down the trees at David Miller's house, ninety-three East Marcus Street.
Were we taking that one down?
Yeah, that's on us.
Yeah, the village highway department's a small tree.
Okay.
Cricket Langell at twenty-seven Chestnut Street, and she's having somebody else do the work.
So that's not one?
We don't have to make a motion.
Okay, and, um, I think that's it.
And the one for Reifenberg, we're gonna talk about it later.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so who's the one that we're proving? David Miller?
It's David Miller.
All right, we got a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Is that it?
That's it.
Website. Anybody got anything?
Nope.
Guys, you didn't get my press releases that have been sent out.
Right.
Uh, financing controls.
No.
We have to establish a cash policy. We talked about that prior. You know, the controllers office, of course, is here and they're on it. We will be getting a final report from them probably by the end of August. They'll come back for any things that, you know. Just so everybody's aware, there was some tightening up we need to do as far as checks and balances and those types of things. Quite frankly, they were very happy. They didn't find any major problems. It's just a matter of oversight issues and shared responsibilities as far as the water and wastewater system in the building.
So we should give some, something of a cash policy from them? Some suggestions?
They don't make those recommendations.
We can ask, just what they think we got.
I asked that. I said, do you have any policies that you recommend? And she said, no, we don't do that. All we do is provide you with findings. So, you know, I think what we need to do is, you know, this doesn't have to be complicated. It just needs to, for example, with multi-sens, no cash should be changing hands. It all should happen here. You know, the order gets placed here, the money's received here, and then the order is placed with the highway department for delivery. And then as far as disposing of scrap iron and that over, things like that. Policy for that, so we should get that in place as soon as possible. And what they'll, they'll come back to us with their list of recommendations and we are responsible for being sure that those recommendations are followed through on. So if we get it done ahead of time, they're gonna come in here and say, oh, great, you already took the steps to correct it, you know? And some of them we've already implemented, you know? One of the things, the problem downstairs was that there wasn't, when somebody came up to the door, if they had payment stuff with them and made their payment, that was what was being used for the receipt. And they said, no, you have to write a receipt out and it should indicate on it that they paid with cash or checking.
Okay.
Okay. So Pat's already doing that. There was a misconception on Pat's part that she had to do it with every payment that came to the office, even if it was mailed. Clearly not the case, only if somebody comes to the door.
Okay.
Because you can't give somebody a receipt if they're mailing you a paycheck. They're not there.
What about that exterior drop box we had? And we have to discontinue that thing?
Yep.
Whether the person is there personally, and the big thing is, if they pay you a check, you have to have a receipt tied to that payment.
Is that drop, is that drop box only by the ghosting service or is it something?
No, it's just a closet.
It's ours. So, you know, we should just, the financing controls, we should be looking at that side of it and get something prepared because it's gonna be one of the requirements. Okay? Where did the energy consumption, Brad, what about the AT&amp;T contract?
Yeah, wanna talk about that? We, they've been approached by AT&amp;T Wireless because they want to expand some equipment on the tower. And they approached us earlier about expanding their leased area to have a generator next to their, their equipment shelter. And now they are not asking for that anymore. They're not asking for change in footprint of the lease ground. They may come back again for what will be a proposed third amendment to the tower lease agreement. But for now, they want to just add three panel antennas. There's two on each sector and they'll add a third one right between the two. So sectors pointing in, uh, three tractors, yeah, yeah. So they'll put one between, which will be smaller than the two panels that are already up. And then they're gonna have to have new cable lines for fiber and all these new digital things that they have. And some other hardware that'll go up there. But they'll be on the same height, about seven feet is the center line for all, for all their stuff on the tower. It's gonna be subject to a structural analysis, which they've apparently conducted, and that Gary would approve that. From our end, um, what we need to do is approve the second amendment to tower lease agreement, which, incidentally, they already have the ability to add these three antennas in their first amendment to the lease agreement. This is mostly getting added revenue just for the lines and some additional equipment that's gonna go up on the tower.
How much money we got?
Five thousand four hundred forty-five dollars a year, which comes out to two twenty-seven a month, because we have to split it with Crown Castle, who is our tower operator. Now, Crown has approved all this stuff. I looked it over and it looked good. And Rich has looked it over and it looks good. So I would like to approve this second amendment to tower lease agreement for AT&amp;T Wireless for their...
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the second amendment to tower lease agreement for the AT&amp;T Wireless tenant that we have on our, on our tower that's owned by the village and operated by Crown Castle.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, so voted.
And we have additional money from Sprint just a few months ago, so we did a little, what, an additional five hundred bucks a month. And we were laughing, so that's good.
Good deal. Okay, Lisa, did you wanna talk about the Detroit Banks?
Well, it's something that Gallup done for G D C S where they will go in and conduct, conduct an audit on our utilities. We don't, we don't pay anything. They'll get, whatever they find, they'll take fifty percent of what they find. She did get some savings in one email. We look at that. She's got previously in two thousand one for Central Hudson. We received one thousand four hundred ninety-two back, Frontier in two thousand eight, one hundred and twenty-eight, Frontier in two thousand nine, nine thousand three hundred and ninety-one, and Central Hudson in two thousand nine, forty-nine, thirty-nine. So this is something that you'd like to pursue this year. It's just basically signing letters, saying the grievance, signing letters to our utility companies, saying that we are giving them authority to discuss our accounts with Crown Bank. And, um, basically whatever.
I'm feeding a cross to us.
Yeah, it's like that, we got some money from Time Warner, we audit it there.
Yep.
There goes.
So they actually go through the bills?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
They go through the bills and the utilities. Seems like a no-brainer to me. So we make a motion?
I make the motion that we authorize Troying Banks to perform the service for us.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Okay, anybody have any other business? Correspondence. Uh, we have received a letter from the Hunters. One was the issue with the tree that Holly has already talked about. Uh, there's also a skunk there that needs to be removed. So again, if we do this, uh, Bobcat purchase, we can do it. If not, we gotta think about hiring a subcontractor to come in, probably, because we got a bunch of them that need to be done. And there's a problem with the sidewalk there, so we need to add that to our list. We need to go look at that.
Yeah, everything.
You already have that one?
Sixteen.
Yeah. All right, they had also requested another no parking sign in that permit zone. And I went over there and looked and it's clearly marked with appropriate signs as far as I'm concerned. I don't see a need for another sign. I mean, we can put a sign in front of every house, you know? So this is an enforcement issue. If they're having a problem, they need to call the police. We'll let the police move, so the police can enforce it.
Thank you.
Okay? Mad Dash sent us a letter. This is their annual request. They thank, thanking us for our generous support in the Mad Dash race last year and let us know that their race is this later day, September second. So they are asking here that, they have requested assistance from the New York State Troopers and also request the village police department assistance with traffic control and runner safety between the hours of eight AM and ten AM. And they need help at Route nine of Montgomery, Montgomery and Chestnut, Mount Hudson River Road. Mad Dash draws over eight hundred and hundred community members. Your assistance would be appreciated. And I'll make a motion to approve that, uh, we, the village police department, give them assistance. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed. A letter from the American Legion Post. Uh, they would like to request permission to hold their annual coin drop for veterans fundraiser on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, October fourth, fifth, and sixth. As in past years, they would like to set up on Route nine to South and Edmonton Bank and on East Market Street in front of the municipal parking lot from the hours of eight AM to five PM each day. Proceeds of this fundraiser will enable us to continue to provide outreach programs and rehabilitation to our returning heroes from conflicts abroad and continued community events we sponsor locally. Of course, we will accommodate some traffic issues and will work closely with police officials to ensure an orderly flow of traffic to the village. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Michael Bickel, Coin Drop Chairman. I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, so voted. Did everybody get the correspondence from Jeff from Monty?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What's the take on this?
I have more questions about it, I think.
Okay. You wanna talk to Jeff there?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take it.
I meant to, I just, I didn't get that.
We'll take it for now. All right, minutes approval. We got a whole school of air function. Okay, Minister March, March fourth. Any additions or missions corrections? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. March twelfth, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, so voted. March thirteenth, we have a meeting every weekend, every Monday. I'll make a motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Uh, March fourteenth, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, so voted.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
You did spend, spell Brent Volcek's name wrong in...
Did I?
Yeah. He appeared in two or three of those.
I'll send that one, we'll go back on it.
I can't.
Okay, uh, April first. Is that the reord meeting?
No.
No, it was a budget meeting, okay. Uh, the only change I see in that one, Lisa, is down in the body, zoning ordinance and events code for the fair. It references law fourteen oh nine. Law fourteen oh nine has nothing to do with zoning ordinance in the events code. Law fourteen oh nine was a Senate bill from Albany that was going to be, make an amendment to, uh, fairgrounds legislation.
Okay.
Okay. We need a motion to, uh, make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye, opposed, so voted. April fourth, uh, one correction in there. And in paragraph number one, two, three, four, five, six, it talks about Robert Fennell's letter regarding signage. It says Mayor Reardon will speak to the offending business owners. What I had said was that I would ask to address the Chamber of Commerce membership. I'm not gonna go to the individual business owners. Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. April eighth, second paragraph, there will be no rental of the mobile station, new pimpin'. It should be, there will be no rental of the mobile station, no pumping of the septic, et cetera.
Now there goes a lot of money.
And not pimpin' them out. Okay, uh, April eighth, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed. Uh, April ninth, Northern Dutch's Hospital Pilot Program down at the bottom. But don't write these all down. I'll just go over with it, all right? The change I'm gonna suggest there, it says Kirchhoff Properties. It's a Gene Sterniger attorney who represents Kirchhoff Properties, period. And then it says would like to build an expansion on the property, all right? It says Gene Sterniger attorney who represents Kirchhoff Properties, which would like to build an expansion on the property. All right, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, so voted. May thirtieth, motion to approve.
What is it?
Special meeting. You got it, right?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, is there all this, a sheet of times?
I just wanted to...
Yeah, so it was a special meeting. Executive session, personnel matters. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I had this missed file. This is from February twenty-fifth. Uh, one correction I have. Uh, it says, uh, escape and rescue gear, which includes safety harnesses and lines for jumping from buildings and it's line for rappelling from buildings. You're not gonna jump out there. And... I will make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Is there, is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. That's all I got. Order and sewer adjustments.
Uh, before we go there, I have a question about the budget. I, I got some sheets from the...
These numbers?
What do you mean, you're all working?
No, 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 we're gonna discuss those. We're gonna discuss those.
Is it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
What adjustments? Uh, I, I changed the format to be more readable and understandable. Uh, this, this month we had twenty-four adjustments, but the majority of them had to do with, uh, new accounts and tapping fees and the, uh, five tapping fees. And, uh, five tapping fees and, uh, nine, and on nine tapping fees and five new accounts. Uh, there is also a item on there, um, final bills, and final bills in that case means that if a house was sold or, uh, any other transaction, uh, this is, uh, for closing, just when you get your, your oil bill, it's on the end of the, of the, of the, of the, of the, of the house. So this, this is the majority of them. One of them has to do with the, uh, there was a house grandfather, um, on the road since two thousand and five. And, uh, that was because they, they said they got bad water that, uh, a lot of, uh, particulars to bring together. And there's actually now two more houses beyond that, uh, also at the end of the mine. And, uh, Tom, I had asked when I took this job here, uh, to, to start looking at this, uh, big measurements of this, uh, of this property. And, uh, we have done that for close to six to seven months. And, uh, alternate readings were in mind. Now, what we have done though is we, we have a, like a sprinkler, a little hydrant there that we turn on fifteen minutes every day. And, uh, run the water through, so, so nothing gets stagnant in there. And, uh, we tested with the water, uh, I think three times a week. And we found nothing. And we, we sent it to the owner of the property with that. And, uh, we're going to, uh, we're going to pay the bill off, off the cost of the water. And we had water that fills sometimes with five hundred dollars in, in, in a quarter, and we had to break down to fifty-four dollars, so. And so now, uh, the last one we wrote down for a hundred and two dollars because of the timing involved. But when we go now, he has to pay for the money. Uh, he used, he said it was using the water to purify, so he put it just running and running and running. And, uh, but he, he also has a big garden there, but, uh, this is now stopped. Um, that, well, that, yeah, so the, okay, so there's two more items here, uh, have to do with, uh, uh, applied, uh, payments, uh, applied the wrong accounts. And one of them is the police stations, which we don't charge. And the other one is a, another incorrect, uh, requirement of penalties, another, so there's twenty-four items. I want to make a motion to, to approve these adjustments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So voted.
And I give, uh, for now, I give, uh, Lisa a couple of these, which I have a favor to attach to the meetings.
Okay, I got some too. Any, a lot of these should drive my head. For wastewater adjustments, uh, a hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents, account number two eleven eighty-two S, final bill. Uh, thirty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents, another final bill for account number four zero zero forty-four S. Three startup fees at twenty-five dollars each for account numbers four zero zero nine two S, four, um, S nine three S, and two one one eight eighty-two S. And then it's eight tapping fees for account numbers four thousand nine ninety-four S to forty-one oh one S. Eight tapping fees for the garden, which is good. That's six thousand dollars, but that means that they're, they're getting these things.
We're on the line.
The, the, they actually sold that, I understand. Are they really?
They only have six left. Okay, so we need a motion to approve.
Make, to approve.
I make a motion to approve those as I read them.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So voted. What do we got here? Oh, yeah, this is, uh, uh, this is something from the county, county human resources department, alright? And ultimately on sole responsibility for appointing authority, alright? When, uh, event something were to happen to me, there needs to be a second in command. So Howie is deputy mayor. Paul, she doesn't have a problem. We're headed down there.
No.
No, go ahead. You're supposed to say yes, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead. No, you said, do I have a problem?
I thought you said, oh, I'm dead.
No, I don't have a problem.
Okay. So Howie's going to be on there, Lisa. Alright, anybody have anything else?
Here's the lease. We should probably create two originals for Jim to sign if you can.
Okay, and Rich will want one for his file too. Okay, nothing else?
Well, I have some of my budget here.
Yeah, we're talking about this thing here?
No.
Oh, okay.
Look at it. We just got it, so look at it, alright? And then we're going to sit down and talk about it later. Okay? Any other business? Posture adjourned, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So voted. Thank you, gentlemen.